Merry Christmas. If you will, stand with me for a moment of silence. And while we're in that moment, just remember each other, our neighbors that are still suffering in the flood, and just check on your neighbors this holiday season. Jackson, you can leave us a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all for coming. We're going to call to order the meeting December the 12th, 2024. If you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Greaver?
Here.
Ms. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Clifton?
All right, we're going to move just around a little bit. I know we've got a bunch of guys and parents sitting in here from the football team. We appreciate you coming up, coming here and being with us. We appreciate your, the season that you gave us. Lot of excitement, a lot of good plays. Y'all done a good job, and we appreciate it. And Coach, you got something you want to say?
Well, first of all, I want to invite all of the school board up to our football banquet, January 23rd, 6 o'clock, where we can really take the time and point each one of them out for what they've done. Some of these guys don't even know it. We scored 366 points, which is a school record for one season. They were quite a bunch of entertainers. And I'm not even talking about the football game. Of course, we have two players that were District of the Year players, one on defense, Sam Cretzinger, one on offense, Juan Mejia. We had 10 all-conference, or all-district, excuse me, we're in Tennessee, not North Carolina. We had 10 all-region football players, first team, five all-region, second team. We had Jace, who was academic, all-region, plus all-region as a player. We had a tough situation as far as the weather. Now, I want to tell you, we practiced on Monday morning after the hurricane at 8:00. Now, we didn't have everybody there that first day, and that was understandable. But we practiced every morning at 8:00, and they were there. Weight room, then went through our practice, and then, now, I won't take much of your time, but I have to tell you this story about Gatlinburg Pittman. So Gatlinburg Pittman has went to the third round two years in a row, and had Alcoa already moved up, I'm not so sure they wouldn't win a state championship last year. And if they had moved up, Alcoa moved up this year, I'm not so sure Alcoa, I mean, excuse me, GP plays for a state championship this year. And the only team in our district that's beaten them is this month, right here. That being said, the year before, they beat us 49-6. And I told those guys after that game, we didn't know how to play in big games, but we learned. And I don't know however many of you that was at that game, and you cannot believe, and I might get a little emotional, and I don't mean to, but two minutes, 47 seconds to go in the game, we had a season-altering incident, okay? And we really should have lost the game. Two starting linemen not in the game, and our starting running back got hurt. So, and to be out on the field, it's a highly emotional deal when you have, you know, a team leader go down. So, and that took a minute or two, and so on, and so Jace comes over, and Coach McLean and I were standing there, and he said, "Pretty simple. Same formation, same plays, I'll find a way to win." And we did. But now, that being said, there was other players that stepped up like you wouldn't believe. My brother, who was, you know, come watch us play, he said that that was the closest to a college football game atmosphere and action that he'd ever seen. And I had to, after looking back on the tape, that was special. And again, if we don't have the injuries we have, we think we're playing on, and that probably could have happened. But we'll talk a lot more about that at our football banquet. There was, you know, the, and I've said this in the paper, the joy of my entire career has been at Johnson County.
Appreciate it.
And I've told Dr. Simcox this before, I wish I'd have came up here 25 years ago. I really do. We wouldn't have these guys for all 25. Guys, a few might have slid around that way. We're hoping to get them graduated. So after all these years in high school, I guess I get to graduate too. But the characters on this football team, now, I'm sure over the last two or three months, the school board has heard how bad or how not good the education system is. Well, I'm going to tell you how good it is. You're looking at it. And we have quality parents is the reason that happened. We have quality coaches, not myself, but the rest here that are with me tonight, and the other coaches that couldn't make it for other reasons. And that football team is special because of those kids are special. And we appreciate you recognizing their accomplishment. You know, there's only been nine district titles from Johnson County in 97 years of football. And, you know, these changes tell you different, but I'm telling you right now, the tank is not empty. They'll, they'll be back. But again, appreciate you guys for taking care of us, and again, you're invited 6:00 January 23rd, where we can just sit down and tell you all the job that most of them did throughout the entire season, through their last, you know, the last three years I can speak of since I've been here. But Coach McLean and I got together and decided to do this three years ago. We didn't think any of them could play football. But they have, they have proven that they're so much more than just football players. I want you to know that as well. They're, it's an honor that they live in this community, and I am certainly proud of them.
Well, thank you, Coach. Thank you for bringing those guys. If you'll come up here, front, stand, face the island, I think there's some pictures that need to be taken.
Yeah, come on, guys.
And while they're, while they're doing that, we've got a bunch of young ladies that went into competition last weekend, I think, and they're Johnson County cheerleaders that got asked to move forward, so we appreciate them too. These guys not only won a lot of football games, but they, they shared their feelings with the rest of the teams that they played and done a good job representing Johnson County. Yeah, Coach, swing in here, Bert, too. Can you get them in there, Tina? Broad shoulders. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
A little more!
We can't thank the guys without thanking the parents, because they got to take them to practice and come get them off the bus and everything else. So if you guys and parents want to leave, I'll give you a few minutes to do that. Appreciate you. All right, we'll move. Item number three, public comment, is Lena Dunn. I don't see anybody, it's on the paper we had filled out. Move on to item number four, recognition of visitors and delegation participation, which we just had the one. Laurel Elementary Staff Recognition.
And this month, we are recognizing and honoring employees of Laurel. So, Coach Eggers, turn it over to her.
Sorry, Megan and I are both shy, so neither one are like, whoo, whoo, whoo. Laurel Elementary School is certainly blessed with wonderful teachers. I know I talk about that all the time, but we are a teacher's assistant staff. We just have the best group. And when I was tasked with the tour or the job of finding one person from our school to recognize tonight, I knew that wasn't a task that I could do by myself. So I went to the staff, and I asked them to nominate one person that they felt like should be recognized, and then also give me one reason why, at least one reason. Okay?
No other reasons.
Yes, you did. They chose Megan Eaton, who teaches first grade at Laurel. This is Megan's first year here, and I'm going to read some of the statements that were given by her peers. Megan really tries her best, and that is absolutely true all the time. She works really hard to help students who need extra, and that's, might be extra love, it might be extra help, it might be extra anything. She goes above and beyond all the time. Well, another person said she worked so hard during the storm recovery, and she did. She was there by my side several days. In fact, I had to make her go home at least once. Another person said she came to support our school, students, and the Laurel community when there were plenty of places in Elizabethan she could have volunteered at. She drove from Stony Creek every day to, to help her students and their families. And then, the last one was, she's always the first to volunteer to help with anything. So I think she regrets that after she sees what I've got her into, but she's, she is. Well, this is her first year in Johnson County. It is not her first year in education. She began working as an assistant in Carter County, and then she went on to LMU in 2018 and got her master's degree in elementary ed. She's completed interim positions in third and fourth grade E.L.A. and fifth and sixth grade science at Hunter Elementary. She taught pre-K eighth grade through eighth grade art for one year at Unica Elementary. She taught special education at Unica High School for two years. She completed her special education endorsement from Carson Newman, and now she's working on her EDS in educational leadership at LMU. She is such an asset to our school and our county, both personally and professionally, and we are just so glad to have her. Megan also coached softball and cheerleading, but her number one specialty is being an awesome mom to a young man who's really great named Toby. And he's, he's just as delightful as this mom. Thank you.
I didn't want me to talk.
You like to, you can.
I talked all day. She'll talk all day to first grade.
I will.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
The second one down, grow your own candidates. We got to move to January. And Johnson County Youth League volleyball program. Ms. Jennings?
Hello, my name is Sarah Jennings. I am the PE teacher at Mountain City Elementary, and I'm the head coach for our high school volleyball team. And I'm here tonight to ask for permission to use the school system's gym so that we can start a youth league for volleyball. We have everything ready to go. We've made a board. We have made rules and regulations. We've set dates and all of that, so the only thing that we're missing is just a place for the girls to practice and play games. And we feel like this is really important. I've been at the coaching at the high school for several years now, and we really feel like our middle school and high school needs a theater program of some sort for volleyball, and we haven't had one. We have one for football, we have one for softball and baseball, and we really just feel like this would benefit our program in the long run, so I'm just asking for permission to use the facilities for that.
Have you talked with, I guess, what time of year are we talking about?
We are going to fit it in between youth league basketball and youth league softball and baseball, so it won't interfere with any other.
Okay, now, just crossover on the gymnasiums.
And it's going to be short. It's going to kind of be about a six-week program, but we just feel like that's going to be more beneficial than attending anything at all. And we don't want girls to have to, you know, choose between any sports, and that's why we just feel like it's best to try to fit something in for them before they get to middle school, so that they can have some type of, you know, basis to go off instead of just getting in the same grade and feeling like they have to learn everything all at once. It's just been really tough.
Which school would you look at?
Mainly, we should just, mostly, we think we're going to be able to use Mountain City's gym. We may need to use Doe for some practices and stuff like that if we end up having several teams. We're looking at about, I did like a, like a preview survey to see how many girls we might have, and we had about 20 or 30 fill that out. I think there'll be more. Eighty percent of the responses was from Mountain City, which is where I teach. But once we can kind of get the information out to all the other schools, that we're thinking we'll at least have 40 girls, which would be about four teams. So if we stick with, you know, that number of teams, we can probably just use Mountain City. But if we end up having more, we might be able to use, have to use Doe. But we're thinking we can do all of the games at Mountain City.
So you ask principals?
I have not. I was going to ask permission first from you guys before I went and asked.
Okay, as long as, in my opinion, as long as the principals are good with it, I'm good with it. It's more, any other question?
Now, which gym was it you wanted to use other than that? City School?
We're thinking maybe Doe. We might have to use Doe, but we're thinking we can do the majority at Mountain City.
I'll make a motion to approve the request. You got a motion?
I have a second.
Got a second? Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Good idea, sir.
Item number five, approval of agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion or any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Good idea, sir.
Item number five, approval of agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion or any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Item number six, consent agenda. Is there anything on there that you want to pull off and look at separately?
Let's see.
If not, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the city agenda as presented.
On that end-of-the-year cleanup?
Yes, sir.
What's that consist of?
That's just the end-of-the-year cleanup that we always have to do with Head Start, because theirs runs from January to December, where it has the, all of their budgets, or school year, which is July to June.
So it's mostly federal?
Yes.
Federal program?
Yeah. And then we, we do this every year, just to clean up for Head Start.
What about the approval of the amendments? No, not the amendments here. Let's see, what was it? Oh, there it is. Acknowledge of federal grants. Do you have copies of the grants here, and what they're used for, and amounts, and all that kind of stuff, and how it's dispersed?
Well, that was your attachment, in your attachment, yeah, 6C.
I just got that just now, because I wasn't able to come by and get it this week.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably better if I could get it, like, maybe, instead of like on a Friday and then the meeting, because it's usually weekend with kids. Get it a little earlier, because I can't swing by.
Well, we always, that's when we have everything for the agenda.
Just a couple days before?
Yeah, we have everything to go out to you all on Fridays. And, you know, we email the whole packet, and then if you want to pick up.
Do we get the attachments? Can you email the attachments?
She does. They are emailed.
In here?
Yeah, everything is emailed. Mm-hmm. Yes. And if you have specific questions?
Yeah, I just didn't see anything on the grants.
Yeah.
As I was going through here.
Yeah.
What pages is it on?
It's six, it's six C. Maybe a third in. It says budget detail. It looks like this.
That shows what they're used for?
Yeah.
Where they came from and all that, Jace? How long we have them for?
It's just the budget detail from E-Plan. It just shows where each, how the money is allocated and how it's split up for each grant.
I mean, like, having information of where the grant's from, what it's to be used for?
Yeah, it's noted.
How long do we get?
It's noted. It's noted on the narrative description.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Wait, who's second?
We need a second.
Oh, I thought we did.
Okay.
We got a second now.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Report of student's board member, Jackson.
All right, so first, wanted to say congratulations to our cheerleaders. They had a wonderful competition in Pigeon Forge this past weekend. They also got, they're able to go to a competition in Orlando next, so that's exciting for them. Then, we also had, in the, in the parade, some of our schools' programs made some floats for that. As you can see up here, we have our student leadership team, as well as our FFA, who won first place for nonprofit. And then, FFA also has two competitions they're going to next week, so good luck to them. Next, we have our, our play for the winter was last weekend. We had a lot of fun doing that, and I know it was a really great show. Everyone's enjoyed it, so, you know, congratulations to all the actors for a wonderful showing. And then, here's your basketball schedule for the month of December. We've got tomorrow versus Cloudland, or, sorry, that's today. Today versus Cloudland. You can head on up there after this. Then tomorrow is at West Green, and then the 17th, they'll be, they'll be playing Westridge, as well as Christmas tournaments happening, happening a little bit later in the month. We also had some of our music programs having concerts at the high school. The middle school and high school choir performed on Tuesday, and that was really good. Went to see that one. And then, actually, tomorrow is the middle school and high schools band concert, so be sure to come out and support our band of that. It's going to be really good. And then, for the seniors, the FAFSA frenzy was scheduled for yesterday, but we got out early. It's been rescheduled to the 18th, so be sure to come by that if you need some help with your FAFSA, getting that filled out. And then, last thing is, we have our last day before Christmas break on the 20th. So sure everyone's looking forward to that. Good long break, because, you know, we haven't had enough of those this year. So, yeah, that's all I've got. Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you, there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say one thing, as far as what Jackson mentioned, as far as the plays, if you haven't gone to watch them in a play, you really need to. As far as, I think I've seen three of them now in the last six months with Harry Potter, Wizard of Oz, Sound of Music. They're fantastic. Get out and support the high school players. Because they are great.
I will say, our, the community theater has some high school students participating there, and play in the spring. It's going to be called The Play That Goes Wrong. And then, for the high school theater, they're playing this spring. It's going to be Clue, like the board game. So be sure to come see both of those.
All right. Thank you, sir. Item number eight.
Just a five-year plan update, as we will continue to update, expand, and maintain security systems in all schools and all school district facilities. And this is just some things in the future. We're currently, I'm working, Harvey and myself are working with the sheriff to add an additional SRO to ESC. So that's a grant that we're working in collaboration with the sheriff. Continue to update our camera systems. We're looking to maybe add an additional security guard to alternate between the elementary schools, because when the SROs are out of an elementary school, it pulls one of our security guards from the field. So that's something that was brought to our attention. We would like to maybe try to put in the budget for next year. And then, we've done the window film on all the doors. We would like to look into doing the window film on the ground-level windows.
So that security guard, we're looking at a full-time position, not just a part-time?
Yes.
So will that still require the two full-time teachers and an assistant at ESC, once we get the officer in?
Yes, they're just down there for security. The two, the teachers and the assistant are down there facilitating and teaching. They would just be down there for security.
I had asked that in the fall, early fall. That's why I was asking, and they said something about the SROs couldn't go down there because of like a different address or something within the...
They can rotate down there, but we can't house, house one down there because of the grant qualifications, and that's something that the sheriff and I are working on.
Okay. I had asked before, if you all could, it's like, I was trying to get like a census, like what the daily census is, like what is the normal in ESC? How many students are we normally there, and what is the curriculum?
It just varies.
But I mean, like, we have a census of what it's been for the last school year and up until now, so that would be good to have, to kind of see, and what exactly is the curriculum down there? Like, do they...
They use Plato if they're down there for extended time.
But I mean, like, even one day? Do they still have their schoolwork?
It's work, it's work from the teacher.
They do get that?
Yes. Short terms, it's work from the teacher. Long terms, they're on Plato.
Plato, yeah.
But I can get you a, for the past two years.
Kind of see, just kind of see, like, what the numbers look like.
So that's just an update on our five-year plan security.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, thank you, Michelle. Item number nine, discussion and approval of assisting Johnson County government with the building of a livestock processing facility in the amount up to $548,240.
And I'm just going to turn that over to Mr. Adams.
So about three years ago, the governor gave us $1 million for CTE programs, and it was to do things that would reinvent time, space, and partnerships with that money. The two programs that we decided to work with was the meat science and butchering program and cosmetology. We didn't know exactly how much we would need to delegate where. At that time, they said the building would probably cost around $1 million. We got the bid back in. It's been bid twice. The low bid's now 1.6 million. The county has grant money to cover a little over $1 million. That's why I put 548,000 some odd dollars. And the reason I put up to that is because we were awaiting an answer of a $400,000 grant that would go to the county, and that would lower the amount to actually $148,000. So I put that in there this, this month in particular, because if the bid comes due, the county commissioners will need to accept that next Thursday, because the bid expires two days after that. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions I can about how that would work with our students, what they would get from that program. But it would also be a benefit to our community. This would be Johnson County, Johnson County Schools, TCAT, Hunters for the Hungry has reached out to me about helping with that program. I'm not sure if y'all know what that is. But it'd be a great partnership amongst, amongst community members. It is a lot of money, but whatever you do right now is going to cost a lot of money. Education is a cheap. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Who, who, who will be the owner of the building?
As of right now, well, it would be Johnson County, Johnson County Government.
Okay.
And so with this investment, I would ask if you all approved it, that if we said we will do this, but if y'all ever want out of it, we would like to retain the building for educational purposes, because in fact, we're paying a third of the cost.
That would make a, yeah, pretty good sense.
Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to have a work session on that and get some more details worked out on it.
Well, if you'll ask me, I'll try to answer them before you do.
I, I would also like that, because I don't know, I don't know if this was discussed before I got here.
I've, I've reached out, I tried to reach out to each of you this week, and I know everybody's busy, but if, I'll, I'll be more than happy to, work session or whatever. We just need to do it fairly quickly, so if we do decide to do it, the bid won't expire before next Thursday.
We got to get, actually, on time crunch, get it done before next Thursday.
We are.
That's a big decision to make very fast and not knowledgeable.
It is now.
I mean, that's huge. I mean, we're, are we purchasing the armory as well with the county?
Well, that's, that's...
I mean, we got two buildings written, ready to buy.
Well, this, this would actually...
Within the county, with the county government?
Yes.
So this, this ISM grant, you've got $1 million that's allocated, meaning it's for CTE purposes, and the two purposes that you chose to save the money for and use it for was meat processing, cosmetology.
Yeah, and I actually, whenever, before I wrote the grant, I met with the county commissioners at the time, and mayor at the time, and the school board at the time, and ran that idea by them, and they said, yes, before I proceeded.
If it's for the cosmetology, it's for the cosmetology and meat processing plant that million dollar was?
Yes.
It was for both?
Yes.
But all we'd be really doing is purchasing a building with it?
No, no.
No? See, how this works.
So the goal for cosmetology is armory. Meat science will be in a totally different location.
So is the county gonna put money in as well to buy these armory in this building? County's gonna match our price?
Will you explain the process?
County don't have no money.
I'm just curious, if we're buying two big buildings?
From what I understand, the price of the armory is a little over 700,000 dollars. We voted back some time ago to go in and write a grant with the county. Each of, each side would chip in 250,000 dollars.
The community block grant.
And then we would receive 2 million dollars. Do all the renovations and stuff, we would have 2 and a half million dollars. Our portion will be 250, the county's portion will be 250. Is that correct, Mr. Robbins?
That is correct. It's a 2 million dollar grant. It is through, it's called the Connected Communities Facilitate, Facilities Grant. And the, there is a local share that has to be placed, and it would be a cooperative agreement, a mutual agreement between the school system and the county, both putting a quarter of a million dollars in as that match to help with that 2 million dollar grant to buy the facility and actually renovate it and retrofit it to the purpose of what we're asking for.
So the county, so y'all had a grant with the armory. The school system has to put in a quarter million, and the county has to put in a quarter million. Has that already been done? Is that already out of both people's budgets?
It's in process.
It's in process. This, this sale here, we talked about a few years ago, and it's been discussed...
Well, this has been going on for years.
Yeah, it's been almost four years into it.
Yeah, almost four years into it.
But it's not completed, right?
It's not, it's part of it.
Right.
I know it's been going on a long time.
So based on what you had told me on the phone, you conservatively figured 400 beef cattle per year as far as, you know, the amount they'll do, plus whatever we have coming in as far as hunters with deer and things along those lines as far, so the revenue from that should pay for the salary for the two employees, cover overhead as far as expenses and things along those lines once it gets...
So Mr. Greifer, I'm gonna tell you something. I'm a little bit older than you. Johnson County has had two of these meat processors here in the county in my lifetime. One of them's out here at Tri-State. It went flop. Then they built one up on Hoods Hill. It went flop. Now...
To call any of the local facilities and try to get an appointment within the next two months, because it's probably not gonna happen. If you look back at the COVID and supply chain issues, it's gonna serve as an outlet for your farmers, for your consumers, it's gonna serve as a place for your hunters to take their deer. You know, if you had a deer worked up in the last little bit, they're charging 140 to 200 dollars depending on when you got that. But it's y'all's choice. These are the two programs we chose three years ago. I'll be happy to answer any other questions I can.
And you've got it broken down into three sub-masters as far as the curriculum, and each one, they come out with a different certification, so that when they graduate with it, they have certifications in the various levels.
The total curriculum's 900 hours. We worked with TCAT, there wasn't a curriculum for such. And so we worked with them, submitted that to the Tennessee Board of Regents and got it approved. So any TCAT that teaches that now will actually be using our curriculum. There's three exit ramps, 300, 600, and 900 hours as far as what you're preparing students to do. The way we expect to have students down there, they can stay half a day or all day. You'll have students that don't wanna stay on the hill. We'll have a lab there so that students can work on their required classes. And they can stay there basically all day long and get seven hours of credit while they're there.
So they would work on their work without a teacher? Is that what you mean, or like extra, like...
No, they would be in that building. Somebody there.
There would be a teacher down there as well for when they...
Well, just one. You'd have the teacher that teaches that class.
So you, so you're gonna have teachers going from the high school to down though to teach a class in case they don't wanna go back to the hill? Is that what you mean?
No, it'll be self-guided, a lot like what we have with Virtual Academy. And then a teacher there to help do those classes that they need. At the meat plant.
You'll have two employees, one to actually teach the course and then one to manage the facility as far as...
So is that already figured into the budget, like with this money? Is there any renovation machinery? The budget for the people that are gonna be teaching this, is this all in this money?
The only thing that the school system's on the hook for is the teacher's salary. The county should be responsible for the rest, maintenance of the facilities.
The county's gonna be?
Yes, ma'am.
Be their building.
Is their building?
The county, the county's gonna erect the building here.
Yes.
Do I understand that?
Yes.
So it's gonna be the county's building?
Yeah, but I would ask that we...
But you'd have to go in half and half with this, this money for that, right?
They'll be in charge of, but like I said, we'll put a stipulation in there, if something happens, county don't wanna do it anymore, it comes back to us, school system.
Yeah. There are a lot of questions. We'll just have a meeting if that's okay.
I don't know that we've got time for a...
Yeah, but it's gonna take time.
I mean, that's not, we can't really, that's a huge thing. And how many kids are interested? Is there quite a few?
I do a survey basically every year when they're signing up for classes, and we've got enough to do the program. There's generally 20, 25 or something.
How many children have to be enrolled for this to make it sustainable?
If we had 20 to 25, that'd be a great number.
20 to 25?
Yes, ma'am.
So the 20 to 25 kids will be needed, and the county's gonna own the building, and they're gonna do all the maintenance?
Yes.
Who's gonna put in all the equipment in there to do the processing?
The, the equipment is actually sitting in the warehouse.
So we have it all? And there's somebody that knows how to fix it all?
All from another end.
So somebody locally that's already employed by somebody here?
Well, that...
Knows how to maintenance the machinery?
Well, Hobart, it's all Hobart equipment. So as in any restaurant equipment, if you have major issues, you call Hobart.
Is it, so is it under warranty, or will it cost us, or will it cost the county to fix such?
Well, it's all the county right now.
The county is in total agreement with this. I think it would be good to have the county representatives sitting with us when we discuss this, to make sure everybody's on the same page. That's very important.
Where y'all go on?
And another thing I'm concerned about is the sanitation part of it. Is you gonna fix the people that lives in that community down there?
No, part of this grant, they've already done the environmental survey, so it's, it's good.
So they gonna have any odors or anything that's gonna spread out into the community?
Part of the, the grant was an environmental survey, and it was good.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to either approve it or... Or ladies and gentlemen, all right, yes.
Can I just interject, I think unless I've misunderstood, since this would be a high school program, I'm just gonna point out that both the armory and this, none of, it's all, none of it's coming out of budget per se. It's all from ISM funds, correct?
Yeah.
Is that correct, Herbie?
Yes, you're correct.
So it's not coming out of general fund or fund balance or anything like that? It's all the 1 million dollars that the governor allocated for CTE programs.
And all of what the county...
I just wanted to, I thought that was worth repeating.
The ISM grant was intended to be used for meat processing.
It was intended to be used for CTE programs from there.
And the, also the cosmetology, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, my question is, the grant is good, but eventually it'll run out. So are we, are we in place, are we set up? Can we afford to keep it running long-term? Is my question, where the funds gonna come from?
The only thing we're looking at is the teacher's salary, and where everything is dual enrollment. That class will bring in extra money through TESA, and we'll also get a little money from the TCAT, not a lot. So that, that will help fund that position.
So the startup part is good. But long-term, we have, with the budget and stuff, we'll be able to maintain all of this, fix anything, buy materials?
Well, that's, we don't have to worry about materials.
Do we have to do certifications? Will we be paying for certifications? There's just a lot of questions.
Yeah, there's, all certifications come through the TCAT. We are not on the hook for anything except teacher's salary and helping build a facility.
Helping what?
Build the facility, that's what this is.
That's what they're grass for.
And like I said, it could be 148,000, it could be 548,000.
Who owns the land?
The county.
The county.
It's on county land?
It is.
Because you wrote the grant for, what, another 400,000, which might kick in that we don't even have to use the 548 of the ISM?
Exactly. What I'd originally written in the ISM was teacher salaries for cosmetology, meat science. I put in there to build a building for cosmetology. But that's kind of where this is going, because we're not gonna have to build that building. So we...
Will we have money to put everything you need, once the armory's up and remodeled? To put all the chairs and get a teacher for that and all that?
The cost of that comes out of the block grant.
Have you already got that block grant for that armory?
Yes, we're just waiting for the contract to come back from the state. Contract's been executed locally, we're just waiting for ECD to sign off on and send it back.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you said 900 hours, does that include the cosmetology?
No, no, that's just meat science, cosmetology's 1500 hours.
So it's gonna be a full 15?
Yes.
So for anyone, I'm a licensed cosmetologist, for anybody that doesn't know, 1500 hours gets you your license. That is huge, coming out of high school and being able to have a trade. And I don't wanna, I just wanna really emphasize that that is great.
Oh, I think it's...
That's wonderful.
The way we envision cosmetology, and I don't wanna keep everybody on that. That would be a program that we would hire as a 12-month teacher.
Yes.
Students would stay in there in the summer also, if they're dedicated enough. That's the only way to get them their 1500 hours.
Yeah.
Because that's a long time.
Yeah, it's a full year.
So we're gonna try and work on that. If we have some that don't finish by the time they graduate, we're gonna ask the TCAT to keep the hopes and finish them all.
That was my next question for that. Yeah, that's wonderful.
I'm a huge fan of anything that's...
They wouldn't, they'd go straight to TCAT? That is, that's so big.
I'm a huge fan of anything that, you know, helps CTE or improves the trades. And I think that this has the potential to actually provide a genuine benefit to the community as far as meat processing. So I make a motion we approve this.
And I'll sneak up that motion.
Motion in a second. Have any further discussion?
So we're not gonna have a meeting to discuss all this?
I don't think, time-wise, I don't think we have that opportunity. Any further discussion? Call real quick.
Mr. Greifer?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yep.
Mr. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
This is a good thing.
Item 10, second final reading of policy committee recommendations on the following policy, honor roll awards and class ranking.
Can I interrupt for one second? I would suggest, when you have new board members and you have something this large pending, I mean, I looked over the syllabuses and stuff the other day when I got them. But when you have something this large pending and your board changes, I think that that definitely needs to be brought to the forefront, if it's so timed. Because frankly, there's no discussion, and we don't even get to learn about it and what it brings for our future, and how it's gonna work with the money, how it's gonna work for this, and how it's gonna work for that. We're just supposed to go with what was decided by other people.
Mr. Adams and I spent 35 minutes on the phone going over this when I saw this was on it, so I called to ask him questions.
I'm glad you have time for that. I, with work in my life and my kids...
When we get these packets, it's our job to go through, educate ourselves, so we know what we're voting on.
It doesn't matter. Even just the time of this packet wouldn't have given time for me to sit down or any of us as a board and discuss such. This is all huge. This is not just a willy-nilly...
I'll have to apologize, I just assumed everybody knew as much as I did.
No.
Because it's, I've just been keeping up with it.
I've read, I've read about the syllabus the other day, but there's nothing financial that I get. There's no planning, I don't have that.
You're not gonna get nothing financial.
I have none of that.
I'll tell you that right now.
So, I mean, I just think if there's something this large pending out there, that it needs to be brought up earlier instead of the week before it's due.
We'll take that into consideration.
That would be great.
Everybody will. Item number 10.
Yes, this is the second final reading. This is the valedictorian policy that we brought to you last month. Mr. Hagaman had, had met with the committee with, you know, teachers and parents to change the valedictorian policy to a Latin policy. And they've been working on that for several months. And if you have any questions, like last month, you'll be willing to answer them. Definitely think it's a really good policy, the Latin policy, if you like that, so... And this would be effective with this class of seniors.
Any comment, any questions? Second final reading, let's have a little call real quick.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
All right, you got a motion, Mr. ... I'm new to this.
Mr. Greifer?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yep.
Mr. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
I still request a meeting. Herbie, with you, with anybody else that's interested, I would actually like to know more about how all this works, financial futures, how, who's gonna open buildings, who's gonna do this, who's gonna do that, and what it looks for for our future please. It'll probably have to be a meeting.
Because I'll tell you right now, Ms. Klein, you're not gonna get it off this board.
Well, I mean, this is, this is not okay, but it's all right, whatever.
It's getting back like it used to be.
No, it's not.
Item number 11. Final, first and final reading of policy agreements changes to the following policies. Policy 5.501 and policy 6.3041.
Yes, and the only change to these policies is where we had a change in supervisor. Dr. Long was the male counterpoint to the complaints and grievances into Title IX. When he moved to the principal of the high school, it became Mr. Hagaman. So in policy, those specific people are listed, because you have to have a female person and a male person. So it's just changing the name.
It has to be a female and a male what?
You have to have a female representative or someone that the females talk to, and it's someone that the males. So you have to have a female and a male to do complaints and grievances. Because if you're dealing with females, of course, the female supervisor rule. So it's just a change in the names because of where Dr. Long moved to the high school.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the first and final reading of these two proposed amendment changes to these policies.
A motion.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Call real quick.
Mr. Greifer?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yep.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Item 12. Approve the pursuant to board policy number 1.106. Creation of School District Ethics Committee and appointment of its three members.
And this is something we do yearly. Last year's members, the two are from the board and one is a community representative. Last year, we had Mr. Holloway, and Mr. Robinson, and then Scott Mast was the community representative. Mr. Mast is willing to stay on as the community representative, so we will need two, two board members.
I'll make a motion, we do a witness.
I'll second. We don't have to have one?
We have a, we have a complaint, we have to have an ethics committee.
We don't have to have a committee, I already checked. TSBA says we do not. That was something created, but if we're gonna have an ethics committee, we definitely, do you have the guidelines in here? Because we can use the ethics committee for sure, but personally, I think it doesn't really need to be.
Attachment 12 in your packet.
Okay.
And it talks about the kind of ethics. And this, this policy is from TSBA.
Okay, I will just recheck what they had sent me on it.
Yeah, this is their policy that we...
That we have to have it? An ethics committee?
We need an ethics committee in case there's...
The board may create a school district ethics committee.
You don't have to, but we have always had one, and we follow this policy.
Where, what are the policies? You said, where was it at, the policy and how that works?
1.106.
1.106.
You have a handle on yours? I can dig through this. I mean, we could, so, I would like to know like how it, yeah, I'm almost close, I think. It's a lot to go through in one time. Let's see.
And I'd like to know why the 1 through 11 is included under this ethics.
The what?
Code of Ethics.
Now that, this is the policy TSBA sent. I think he's mean.
I think it's in-house.
Serena, do you have, like, do you know ahead of time, like, when the policies are gonna be coming due? Do you have a schedule?
When I get them, I put them on the.
You don't have a schedule of when they're due? I mean, I know, like, it says on the top, it always says issued date and then the renewal date. Do you have, like, ones coming up future that are coming close to be needing to do? You don't have any idea?
TSBA always sends us.
They just send them to you?
They send them to us and say it's time to renew this one, unless it's something that our policy committee wants to change, like the valedictorian policy.
Right.
You know, that, that was something we did on our own.
So we don't just have a log and we have something popping up saying this one, this one, this one's due right now, this time?
Majority of them is when state law goes into effect, you know, if there's, that's why the ones in July are so big, because you've got state policies.
This is quite a lump. Um, what I'm at, so you don't have this until they send it to you?
When they send us that it's time to update or there's been changes due to state law or federal law, then we change them, unless it's something, like I said, the policy committee or something you all.
Because we have them like almost every meeting, we have policy changes. And they're, the state's constantly sending them to you?
Yes.
So I could just email them and request they send them to me early so I have time to read over them?
You can ask.
To really read over them, okay. Yeah, I'll just reach out.
And I always put in your packet the old policy and the new policy?
Right.
And I put in there the changes?
Right.
So you can highlight to see where the specific changes are?
I just need more time to be able to go through all of it and really read it word for word, know what's happening, what the changes are, and I'd like to also compare it to the state law, like the state, what they have. So I've found in the past, things are different.
And we go by what TSBA sends, so, you know, and they have at the bottom the TCA codes, the state laws that it impacts, federal.
Okay, so I'll just email them and see if I can grab those.
So TSBA sent you one through eleven on this policy, right?
This is a TSBA policy, this is one they sent that was approved. This was written by TSBA.
What he's, I think he's asking is that they, TSBA just sent these to you, saying they needed to be updated?
Every year, we have to, we have to update the committee members.
Because I don't think that.
When we would need to anyway, because Mr. Holloway is, is no longer on the board.
That's just like taking gifts and stuff from vendors. I don't think TSBA would honor that.
Email state.
Because that's how you, that's how you get favoritism and all that started.
Is that, I mean, if I read that right, it says you can't, you're not to take gifts.
Well, what's it say right there from seven down?
I don't know, I don't have it in front of me.
Read it.
It is not considered violation of policy. For a board member to receive entertainment, food and Christmas meals, health, security, amenities, food.
That's why I think these are better as, as work possessions, when they're doing policies, so we can sit down and discuss them as a board.
We need a close of policies.
We're not, we're not changing the policy, all we're doing is, line thirteen, it says we have to create a ethics committee consisting of three members who will be appointed to one-year terms. So every year, we have to appoint people. We're not changing the policy, we're just.
Line thirteen though says.
So you had it, like, so you've had it every year?
We've had it for the past three or four years.
Do you have, like, minutes and how, like, meetings for those?
Yes.
Okay.
He just argued that you went on the board and they started that.
We had, we had a complaint, so we had to follow procedure.
I make a motion to table this one and discuss it so we can look over that.
But line thirteen says the board may create a school district ethics committee.
We don't have to have that.
Don't say you have to have.
No, we don't.
Well, you've got, you've got a motion and a second on, on the floor, we'll vote on.
Want a second for me to hold it?
Yeah.
Table it. I made a motion.
Not to do it. What, restate your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
To table it?
For more, for more discussion.
At the end, at the end of the day, the ethics committee is just for show, there's nothing it can do to any of us, so there's no point in having it, just being completely one. As far as, like, my take on this is, they are correct, if you actually go to eight, seven, thirteen, it says that we may create one, but at the end of the day, what can the ethics committee actually do? I'm just being honest.
When, when that happened before, they met and there was a censure placed.
But what does a censure do?
A censure, I mean, it just says, be mindful of what you say.
Yeah.
I mean, because we could burn this up, a lot of things can be brought to an ethics committee, I mean, if they want to work really hard, there's a lot of things gonna be brought, but otherwise, we can just be adults and talk about stuff without having to take up people's time for a committee.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is, is that it can't do anything to us.
That is.
So there's no point in it, so I don't disagree with your all's point.
I mean, I just don't see the reason for.
So you got a, we got a motion and a second to table? Any other discussion?
Well, we know if we have to table, we could just.
No, we would actually have to have it on the agenda to abolish it, because what's, what's on the agenda tonight is to appoint members.
Abolish it.
Yep, we have a motion and a second, we're good.
Call roll.
Mr. Greifer?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Long?
No. Item number thirteen, budget update. Tina, there you are.
So I've not yet received revenue for this month, so that's why you do not have a sales tax or property tax sheet. Then you have your summary financial statement, and I have highlighted expenditures and revenue, so you can see where the expenditures are. Just something that I wanted to mention, Mr. Greifer had mentioned having the bookkeepers take part in some meetings to, so that we would have the capability to allow our students and our parents to pay with credit debit cards. And we have met with OSP by Zoom and we've met with give backs by Zoom. We have reached out numerous times to Skyward. A positive of Skyward is that it's already the system that the secretaries use, and it will be known the cost for using the program, but we would have to go through a third party to actually use the card. So with Skyward, we would still have to, to pick that up. Give backs, the, was probably the least favorite of the bookkeepers. The OSP actually talks to our E P E S, which is our bookkeepers program now, but they're currently used for accounting. And if we're unable to finally meet with Skyward, I think the bookkeepers would like to recommend maybe one of them come and speak with you all or whatever about bringing a contract in January so that our parents would have the capability to do that.
Good, thank you.
Tina, I have a question on the, the budget. Have we got the rest of the money from where it come out hacked? Have we got that back?
No, actually, we met, well, we actually emailed by phone with the FBI to receive the information, and so that actually has to be released. It's actually Connections Academy money, it's not our money.
Right.
But when it is released by the Greenville Courts, then that money will flow on to Connections Academy. And they're hoping end of the year, because they have to finish their investigations and that kind of thing before they release the money to us or to Connections Academy.
Okay, so what is the, when it said that our school system, director, accounts and budgets or whatever it was, is under investigations on Mumpire's audit, the two point six, what is that?
Okay, so let me tell you, one positive thing, and I want to brag, on the audit, there is the mention, because the funds had not been returned to the FBI, by the FBI, to Connections Academy by the end of June.
So that's all that two point six has not been returned?
Yes, because they won't release any of it till they're finished with their investigation to Connections Academy.
But they have recovered every penny of it.
Yes, it's recovered, but they're not gonna release it. I mean, they, they have to finish their cases before they're gonna release it.
So we are under no investigation at all? All that two point six that they say were short is all that Connection Academy money every dime?
Yes, okay, so, what I was gonna say, a positive thing, on day-to-day operations, which is payroll, time sheets, drawdowns of money, deposits, purchases, we have no findings. There are no findings on day-to-day operations.
I saw that, yeah, that's good.
So there's no findings day-to-day. That finding is just because of the money wasn't returned by the end of June and it will not be returned until they release it. The second finding, the only thing that I know, Dr. Simcox and I met with the auditors and we questioned that, and the only thing they would tell us is that was in no way related to the finance department or the director. The director asked if they would change that finding to say that it did not involve the director or anything to do with the finance, and they said they could not do that, that if there was any investigation involving any employee in the system, that they, they had to list out on the finding. So that finding has nothing to do with finances.
Why would it, why would it be on a financial audit by the state comptroller if it has nothing to do with finances? Why would they put that one under investigation if, in a financial audit, a financial report?
So what she told us was if the TBI is involved in any kind of investigation, it has to be listed on the audit report, because they are.
So are we, is, is the money situation under investigation by the TBI?
No, the, the, this is, that is a totally different situation.
What is, what are you talking about? The TBI investigation?
Okay, so the, the, the first thing is the money, no investigation, the FBI, the Secret Service, that everybody has gone through everything, there's no kind of investigation, there may be charges against the person that did it, that is, there is nothing, nothing there. That second thing is in no way related to the finance department or the director.
What is it about?
She wouldn't actually tell us that information, like, she just.
So the comptroller's office refused to tell you why they published a financial audit report on our school system, which says that we are under invest, our director of schools and our systems are.
The, the audit doesn't just include financial information, it also includes, like, human resource type information, they check our time sheets, they check, you know, there's lots of things they check. So we were told that they can't, like, they did not give us any names, they just told us that if there is a TBI investigation, it has to be listed on that.
So us as a school system are being investigated by the TBI?
Someone, someone in the system is being investigated.
And we don't know that. We're the director of schools and we're the school board and we don't know that somebody's being investigated in our system by the TBI and, but the comptrollers do.
If they were investigating, say if they were investigating Chad or him, so if they were investigating you, they put it on the report and they will tell us that, but they can't tell us names, and she specifically said she could not give us any details.
We did ask and she would not. You can reach out to them.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so, because that just makes no sense to me. Because the way it's printed is, is that we're under investigation, two point six million that the director of schools and budget.
It's two totally separate, those are two totally separate things. The first one, there is no investigation, that is just because the money wasn't released to go on to Connections Academy by June thirty. The second one, totally in no way related to the first, and that's actually why Dr. Simcox said, can you not change this? And she said no, because she can't list the person's name and she can't list any investigation information.
But us as board members and it's our, the school system, and we have somebody that the comptroller has identified that's under investigation by the TBI, and now it's out there all over internet land, you can look it up.
Yes.
You know, I've looked at all the audits for the last numerous years, I looked at all of them, and at the reports.
Yes.
So that's out for anybody to see, anybody.
Absolutely, and that's why we try to get.
But we don't know what's going on.
Nope.
That's not okay.
You can call them, because they.
I mean, but we should know, I mean, you should know.
They would not.
They would not give any information, she said she could not name names and she couldn't share, she could plainly say it had nothing to do with the financial department or the director's office, but she couldn't release it.
I mean, that's just putting our name all over the place.
Yeah.
You can rest assured, there's an investigation going on by the comptroller, Mumpire is highly involved in it.
So, oh, I'm sure, I'm sure, but they would not give us any information, like, you can reach out for information, but that.
Have you guys tried anymore to try to figure it out? To get initial reports?
No, they said they would not give us any information.
They would not change it, like, she, Dr. Simcox said.
That just doesn't seem like good practice at all. I mean, they're throwing your county out on paper.
Well, that's why I asked if they could retire, if they could, if they were gonna have that as a funding, if they changed the title.
I mean, I understand how they can't tell you what's under investigation.
They would not, the mayor's gonna wrestle with it.
The way, the wording written, it looks like the second one is involved with the first.
It doesn't matter what it's involved with, it's literally saying our school system's under investigation.
No, it said an employee of the system, that's all she would say.
I did not see employee, it says our account, our director of schools, our system, and some about accounts and budgets, I didn't bring it with me tonight, it never said anything about an employee. It was, it read as in our school system, our director of schools and director of accounts and budgets are, is, is under investigation.
Director accounts and budget is not involved in that particular finding.
Well, that, I'm saying what it comes across as.
And we can give you her number, and you can reach out to her.
All this call, all this call, I can get Mumpire's number, that's fine, I'm just trying to figure it out, and we're listed under investigation for all this money.
No, it doesn't have to do with the money, it is with another situation that the TBI and the comptroller's office are investigating, and they have the right not to release any information if they're ready to do so.
We don't even know what it is.
That's the point, Kim, they will not release it until they're ready to release it to us. They're gonna finish their investigation before they come and tell us.
Well, I mean, it should, okay, I'll talk to them about their wording.
Well, go for it.
I hope you can, we tried.
I hope you can get a change, because we tried.
We tried, we tried.
I'm just trying to figure out what is going on, are we or are we not under investigation? But you don't know for sure, because they won't tell you, they're not telling you anything, so maybe you are.
All we know is an employee of our system is under investigation and that it has to be put. If the compt, if the TBI is in an investigative situation, it has to go on.
See, I didn't see anything about an employee of our system under investigation, it said the director.
Exactly.
She's looking at the.
I'm trying to find the exact word, wording. Sorry, it doesn't want to end with the dot. Sorry. I sent that to you all, didn't I?
You got it, can you read that wordage right there under the final?
It's got one, as far as this cash shortage of two point six existed in the school department as of June thirty twenty twenty-four, and then the other one says the Johnson County School Department is currently under investigation.
Non-employee Johnson County School Department.
And that's why we asked her if she could change the wording and she said no.
And she said no.
But you all are saying.
But you're saying there is somebody under investigation?
Is it school related?
Or something?
Do what?
Is it school related?
Honestly, she said she could not give us details, she couldn't name the employee's name or the situation because of, because of the investigation.
But it's in our school system.
Yeah.
Did they say when they would let us know?
Send investigations over.
And Dr. Simcox did ask if the investigation was completed before the audit report was published, if they would remove it, and she said in, if it was in a timely manner, if the investigation.
When did the investigation start? Because this was, this says June thirty.
It had to start in twenty-three, twenty-four, because that's the, that's what the report is based on.
I mean, because the audit was completed at June, what, thirtieth of twenty-four?
Yes.
So they've known that this stuff's under investigation within our school system since at least June?
Um, yes, they had to know by June because.
Has our attorney checked into it? McCarty? Has he checked in to see what the, what's going on here, realities? I mean, as a system, I'd be concerned if my, somebody or my system was under investigation, I'd surely want my attorney to have already checked into this.
So, you can reach out, you can reach out to her. I, it had nothing to do with the finance department, it had to do with an employee, so.
Has our attorney reached out?
We, we don't really know, I mean, they won't give us any information.
But has the attorney reached out on behalf of us to see what is going on, what are the implications as a system?
But we not ask him to, because they would not give us any information.
I would surely be having my attorney look into it. If we're under investigation, that's just my, I mean, seems like anybody would want to do that, I don't know. Okay, thank, thank you, Tina, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make, understand this.
And, we try to investigate it, because.
Well, that's where attorneys come in.
We don't want the two to.
Right, we have attorneys for a reason.
So.
So I would assume you would have already looked into that.
Tina, I have a question for you.
Yes.
On the, payment on the delay of the construction on the gym out here at the state school.
Yes.
Did we ever get that money back?
What we have is an open purchase order, so all your money is on the open purchase order, and we've taken the piece to pay, like, two hundred thousand, that I paid the invoice that came, so the money is still with us, it's just on that open purchase order. So once we, everything is final and they say it's complete, then we can liquidate the remainder of that purchase order and it goes right back to your funds.
What approximately is the amount of money on that?
Um, my guess would be around three hundred and fifty-seven thousand or so.
Okay. All right, then there's one other question, I, in the finances.
Okay.
On this thirty-some thousand dollars we got back a few years ago in the oil accident that the insurance pays us?
Yes.
You still have that money?
I do, I have it in, it's set in your all's reserves.
Why is it not put back in the county's budget to put on? Why is it not put back in the county's budget to put on?
Because they, they didn't want it. They said that we had taken the funds to, to handle the maintenance, the, like, the oil changes and all that. So it's sitting in, it's sitting in reserves.
So what we got it in reserves for?
Well, because you all didn't want to spend it and the county didn't want it. So it's in reserves so that we know exactly where it is. Somebody has to tell me what.
Do you have a breakdown of the reserves?
I do.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
That'd be awesome. Is all the reserves in one pile, one, one bucket?
Yes, so what happens is you have reserves that might be related to textbooks, furniture, electricity. But they're all, they're all here and then it also has what the, the, who has the information is. So yes, it's all broken down.
So like each department doesn't have a reserve setting somewhere. You have access to all the numbers.
Yes, so what it is, is it's your all's reserves. And that pot of money sits in the reserves. To bring it out, it has to come to you all. So like we have to do an amendment and ask to bring money out of reserves before it can come out. Like we can't take money out of reserves. It has to come to you. You all have to approve the amendment and then money is moved out of reserves.
After the legislative body approves it or not?
Yes, the legislative body also has to approve it with the county commission.
Now, let me ask you something.
Okay.
Who told you how the legislative committee or the legislative people to hang on to that money?
How to hang on to it?
Who told you to hang on?
Well, we've just always used the standard form that we've had.
Who told you to hang on to it, not to send it?
Oh, who, who told me to hang on to it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it was just in the, I don't know.
It was money, it was money expended to us already.
Yes.
So we had to keep it, to keep the books.
Well, and the reason why, the county allocates money toward the payment effect for the purchase of buses.
Right.
For what, what did you say, Russell?
The county allocates funds toward, for the purchase of buses. When those buses come, they are titled to the Board of Education. And the Board of Education at that point assumes all insurability, all maintenance and upkeep, as well as anything else. So therefore, if you have a loss on a bus, that money comes back to the school system. And a lot of times the budget committee will instruct me to instruct the school system to reserve that money to be used somewhere in the future toward the purchase of more likely another school bus.
So do you kind of help move money there?
Yes.
If we got that in writing?
Between Tina, you, you jump and go over and give money?
No.
Well, I mean, your, your county budgets, so you're saying that you are instructed to move the money back or wherever it goes?
I was instructed by the budget committee to have the school system set it up as a reserve that was designated for school buses. Somewhere in the future, and this happens from time to time, based on the schedule, retention schedule and replacement schedule, that we get into situations that the county, it exceeds the county allocation at any point in given time to be able to purchase school buses. And a lot of times that's when we'll, that's when the county will come back and ask the school system, like in this case, to take that $30,000 and apply it toward the purchases of the new buses.
Then why don't you go ahead and put that money back in there?
Because the county does not own the asset. The school system owns the asset.
I know they own the asset, but who pays for that bus?
Well, the taxpayer paid for the bus, just like the taxpayer pays for everything else. And therefore, this is still taxpayer money, it's just with the school system.
I still think it needs to go back to the county where it originated from. There are money to buy the buses with.
It's your opinion.
I'd like to sit with you sometime so I can understand the financial aspect of how all this, you know, when it switches in hands and stuff, it makes more, it'd make more sense in the long run.
I mean.
To understand how all that moves.
Kim, give me a call, we'll see what we can do. I'm glad to sit down with you.
It'll make better sense for, for me, that'd be awesome.
I'd like to make a motion that we put that 30 some thousand dollars back in the county's general fund.
We've got a motion.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
So we're gonna put it on the agenda for next time?
We'd put it right now.
I don't know if it's going, it's not, it's not been listed on the agenda.
As long as we can deal with finances, we put it now.
And that's.
It's not part of the approval of the original agenda.
It's not part of the approval of the original agenda, so I, I don't know that we can do that.
But he's got a, you got a motion on the floor.
But I do have a motion on the floor, you're correct.
I second it.
Any other further discussion?
So what, what are we vote? We're voting to move the 30K from reserves.
From our reserves.
From, from the school system's reserves, back to the county reserves.
Can we do that?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Is there money for buses, right?
There is money, the county allocates money.
It's the county's money, so they should hold on to it for these buses?
It's no longer the county's money, it's the school system's money because the asset is titled to the school system.
Okay.
So it's our money.
Where'd it come from?
It come from.
It came from, it's the insurance company.
Insurance company.
So, hang on, so, so we had a.
Who did the insurance company pay it to?
Paid it to the school system.
Not the county?
Because the school system insures the buses.
So the bus that was totaled or destroyed or whatever was titled to?
The school system.
And then the insurance company paid the settlement for that to the school system, the school system's bus?
Because it's titled the school system, the school system insures the bus.
And then the county said to hang on to the money for when they might have a shortfall to put towards buying a new bus, which we try and do two per year.
So we're holding it for a shortfall time? Cause the county might need it back, is that what you just said?
Yes.
We don't need to be doing that because it's not our money. We're gonna be, we're just holding it for the county until they may or may not need it.
It is our money.
I thought you just said it was until they had a shorting.
The county has just asked that it be set aside to use it for that purpose. The Board of Education can do anything they want to with that money because that money is rightfully theirs because the asset was titled to them.
So we can choose to go out and spend it tomorrow, but we're choosing to be courteous and honor that request?
Yes, that's exactly what we're doing.
And it, uh, do you remember when that happened?
Yeah, that's happened about two, three years ago, I believe.
Three or four years ago, Kim, no.
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it's been on the reserves for two seconds.
Okay. Motion is second. Is any further discussion? Call room?
Mr. Greifer?
No.
Ms. Klein?
Yep.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Long?
No. Any other questions for Tina?
No, I don't have any.
I think we're pretty good to deal with that.
Okay, we've got, uh, an addendum. We need to, uh, approve adding Casey Sutherland and Michael Eggers to a special question committee for collaborative conferencing.
Did they like sign up or how did that work?
In, collaborative conferencing is new for us.
Yes, it is.
This is a totally new process. So in talking to Ben Torres, when the board last month, remember, we appointed, uh, Russell and Chad to be on the special question committee. Uh, in speaking to Ben Torres, the board also had to appoint two teachers to be on this. You have to have equal number. So however many be, many board members you have, you have to have the same number of teachers.
I'm just asking, where did the, where were those two names chosen from? I have nothing against those two names.
This was what JCEA gave.
This is what JCEA gave back to us.
Mr. Russell and Chad.
So that's what the people wanted?
Yes, and we just have, we have to put them on there to be, I guess, to follow the process. And again, this is new for us, so we're all learning.
I think they're great, I was just trying to figure out how, how it comes about.
Yeah.
Cause she's current president of it. Is it former president?
I think so, yeah.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Before we vote, uh, based on some of what Ben recommended, uh, we probably, it's a good thing, we have to treat this as a public meeting. It has to be posted 48 hours prior. Uh, he strongly recommended that this meeting be recorded and we have written minutes of this meeting. And because the fact that we could get in, at some point, the management team could get into a, into a situation in the collaborative conferencing that could do with some financials. It, to my, in my opinion, it would make sense that we would ask the finance director to serve as that, as that secretary for that committee to be able to handle that.
What did you mean this now, the collaborative what, with money?
Well, with collaborative conferencing, there can be some items come up that would pertain to budget and finance.
As in costing the system money?
Yes, potentially, yes.
Did anybody discuss all that and what could be coming?
We don't know. We don't have a clue what they're asking for at this point. This is just the process to be able to have, to set up the, the ground rules for the survey of the professional employees.
Step one is two board members along with two teachers.
I was great remembering without environmental officials, yeah.
You have, you talked to him?
Yes, we, I, actually, I've talked to Tina and Tina's willing to serve in that capacity.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and help us make sure that we get the minutes, the meetings posted, those things. Cause at this point, the special, the special questioning, questioning committee probably will meet two times until at that point, if it's determined that they can move forward, then it will be, there'll be an appointment of the management team. The best that I understand, because again, this is all new to us.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, everybody, ready?
Mr. Greifer?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Director's report.
Um.
Can you hold on a minute? We could care to recite the definition of a, a school board, like what we do, that we're not here just to cause problems, like this is, this is our meeting. Like say a bank has a board?
Yeah.
A business has a board?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And this is our only time to meet and discuss business?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Is that what we do? This is our working session, but people don't have to be here, right? To sit through the working session? If they don't want to be, you know, like people coming, but that's the purpose. This is our work time, this is our job up here to work with the system.
Yeah, this part, this part of our job, yeah.
This is the job, yeah. To have business?
I was just, just wondering.
I think a lot of times people think it's just causing havoc, but it's actually doing what we're supposed to do for the system. Thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
Um, I do want to say thank you to the National Center for School Crisis and Bereavement. They were with us Sunday and thank you all for those that, that could attend and with us Monday and Tuesday. And they were at, um, our middle school on Tuesday and they're a phenomenal resource for us. Um, they, um, provided a lot of guidance and, uh, resources and reassurance of some things and some suggestions of things. So I just want to say thank you and we appreciate their work they've done for us and the continued work that we're going to be doing with them to help, you know, not only our students but our staff in time of crisis. I don't want to.
Hey, Michelle, in answer to that debate, did you all come up with like a policy? Along with that of how often we're going to do assemblies as suicide prevention? Do we have a policy yet?
We are working in conjunction with them. Um, again, they stated, and assemblies are not, small groups, small groups, homeroom type, uh, situations or depending on the, the crisis, um, that's.
I meant like year round prevention and.
Yes, and we are working with them. We have a call with them, we're going to be having a call with them, um, after we get back from Christmas break.
Well, I know you had said you had all this stuff in place, you know, we're putting all these things in place. Um, I would just like to be, I would just like to understand what all is going in place? How's that gonna work? What does it look like? How often are we gonna do it? Who will be attending it and that kind of thing?
We can, and we, like I said, we are working on that and, and updating some things and, um, our policies and procedures and, and guidance with them and I'll definitely.
Is it just them?
No, no, we have some other, uh, we're gonna reach out to, uh, Dr. Seth Brown and see if he can come up and maybe give us, and this was a suggestion from them to try and have a local pediatrician come up.
Yes, absolutely.
Once a week, so, um, you know, of course I saw Seth, you know, hometown boy. He's always been very good to us. So there's a lot of things that we are working on.
Maybe a local psychiatrist, psychologist, somebody local that's actively treating.
That was one of their points, but you know, our, like, the closest one is Knoxville.
Child psychologist?
Yeah, for, that we have had in contact with. So again, that's another reason we want to reach out to Seth and see if he can take in help.
There's plenty of child psychologists and psychiatrists around here, so it'd be great to have maybe Dr. Brown and one of each of those to kind of collaborate and see what they think.
Yeah. Um.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and then the poinsettias in front of you are a Merry Christmas from FFA. So please make sure that you, you take one with you. And just on behalf of myself, Dylan and Connor, we just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and hope you have a wonderful holiday with your families.
Okay, uh, I think, I told you you could say something last time.
Yeah. Thank you. So my name is Pam, I'm a G E O, so you know me. I was, um, went through Johnson County School System, I worked for Johnson County Schools. I have a graduate from the school system and two that are currently in the system. Um, and I appreciate the time to talk. I do want to apologize for not attending meetings prior to this. Um, but you know, I just, I think that we're all here for the children, you know? The question was asked earlier, what's the point of a school board? And I think that's to facilitate, um, you know, between teachers, the community, the central office, that type of thing, and to work out the best plan that's for our children, because ultimately that's what we're here for. You know, um, the work session that I came to, I mean, I was actually absolutely stunned by the fact that it was more like arguing than nothing else. You know, um, I don't know how someone who is a bully can call out other bullies. Um, I don't know how everything got mixed up and we're trying to move away from the purpose of the school system, which is to educate our students. Um, I wholeheartedly feel for these people that have lost loved ones to sickness, suicide, what may be. I also have lost family members to suicide. But, um, in my opinion, I don't feel that it's the school system's job to provide mental health counseling to my child. Um, this one, for example, I brought her with me tonight and I'm not trying to call her out, but she has tons of anxiety. Um, she's on medication for it. Actually, um, had to be put on medication due to some of the people that were recommended to come into our school system and give counseling services. Um, I just feel like the board, you know, is doing a great job ultimately. Um, central office, staff, faculty is doing an amazing job. And if there are any changes that need to be made, they need to be brought up to that person instead of trying to pull the rug out from under people. You know, just like petitions can be made to remove someone from office, that's any position. You know, not just a supervisor or director of schools, it could be, also be a school board member.